There we go, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the operating budget 2020. For the record, we have present, let's see, I need to see my committee here. We have Mr. Schamas, Connor, Mr. Fusco, Brad, and Phil. All right, so committee member wise, we're missing Baylor and Amobian as far as the Finance Committee goes. All right, we have, we covered in not really record time, but we did get through our first third last night. And this evening, our first, this afternoon, our first presentation is going to be from Legislative Branch, Mr. Keith, or Mr. Keith?
You want to go first, Steve, or, okay. I mean, this is pretty simple here today, it's always been simple.
Page seven dash oh one, for those of you that need to know.
I don't think I need to read the description of the Legislative Department, but if you want me to, I will.
I want to see if you understand it.
But on the first page, it's just the listed list of the council members and at-large members. Second page is a description of the Clerk's Office, what we do, our goals and objectives. I mean, we're going to continue to strive towards paperless council meetings. I've heard that for 22 years. I don't know if we'll ever get there, but possibly. Then we're going to replace for the record recording software that captures the audio meetings. IT is working on with Onbase on a current agenda management software to discuss those options. I'm going to let Sarah talk a little bit about that.
So our current recording software is pretty old, and it's on an old computer. IT would like us to replace that and go with something that will coincide with our Onbase system. So they are currently talking with the company, looking into some options for us.
So, and obviously, our support staff is Sarah here, and then Holly is in the office there. They do a great job. They're a step ahead of me, which is probably not hard, but as far as records, maintenance of the records, knowing what's coming, they're on top of it. I, I mean, they're excellent. And as far as the City Council goes, you know, obviously Margot Somerville is President. And we know it's a tight budget, but I've been bugging Steve for chairs in here for four years. So we're going to replace all these chairs, hopefully, if Steve gives us the okay. But I'm going to put the requisition in tomorrow. And because these chairs, and correct me if I'm wrong, like, you've been here as long as I have. We've been, I've been here 22 years or more, and they're due, and you act, it makes you, what, six inches shorter as soon as you sit in them? So, we're, obviously, they'll go out for bid, and I have a book, so I'll show it around to everybody, see what, what ones they like, what they don't like, and we'll go from there. Other than that, the numbers are there.
And so we spent, what, almost $100,000 less than our, our budget last year, it looks like. Was that, let's see, as I look here, it looks like it was under Current Expenditures Others?
Correct, yes. So it was, it was the My Neighborhood ARACRIN grants. We didn't really fully expend that money, yeah.
Very good.
Plus, and your travel, you were a little bit low on your travel versus what we budgeted.
Okay, very good. Questions or comments from any council members? Okay, thank you so much.
One question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Neal. Going to really have to speak up, I don't have good referral here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it, is there some kind of way, is it where we could get a breakdown on, did you say we didn't spend all of our travel? We didn't spend all of the community grant dollars?
Yeah, so, so I will say, some of the My Neighborhood ARACRIN contracts that came in at the end of last year will probably, will hit this year's budget. So in addition to the $80,000 that we're doing this year, we'll have some carryover. So it depends on, we may need to add a little bit at the end of the year, depending on how quickly we process the 2020, you know, My Neighborhood ARACRIN grants.
That, I, and I apologize if I'm missing something. I mean, this sheet, for City Council's budget, I mean, I, I like to know, you know, what do we get for postage individually, so we can communicate with our residents?
We can distribute a more line item. Just the format of what we distributed for the council hearings was at the account type level. So we can distribute to council a more detailed, just down to the line item. I think that's what you're looking for.
Would you be able to provide that within the next few days?
Yes, absolutely, certainly, yeah.
So if we want to make some changes in the budget and fund some things so that we can, please. As far as postage, communication, what we give for education, breakdown on travel? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Malik?
I wanted to inquire about WhiteSpace. I believe there were some financial issues that they were having, and are we going to be moving to a different provider? Are we, I just wanted to get status on that.
Line, would, would that be other expenditures?
It would be in the Current Expenditures Other, correct.
So yes, WhiteSpace is no longer in existence. Keven White, who has been doing the work previously through WhiteSpace, will be becoming an independent contractor to continue the live streaming. He's still doing that currently, so we're moving forward with a contract with him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Amobian?
I'm just curious, council traveling budget, I think we asked for, was it $15,000 or something?
We, you guys got $15,000 for travel and $4,000 for education.
For each council member?
No, that was total. So that would be, that's the total budget for council.
Yeah, I'm talking about $19,000.
$19,000.
No, for travel?
And that's based on?
$15,000 for travel and $4,000 for education.
Yeah, and that's based on what was spent in total last year was really less than $10,000.
For all of council?
For all of council, right.
Yes, but we requested a certain amount for each council member, and if you don't use it, then certainly you can put it back in. So you're saying that is not allocated in this budget?
We, we went back, when we were looking at the budgets, and we had to get the general fund to a certain number, so we went back and made cuts where we saw that money was not utilized last year, and this is one of the areas that we looked at. So yes, we, we went back and reduced the travel based on the amount that was spent in 2019.
I'm certainly requesting that you look at that again.
I'm sorry?
I'm asking that you look at that again, because?
I think he said he's going to provide.
Right.
Because of Mr. Neal's question.
Yes, but?
He's going to provide line by line.
But it sounds like he's not even allocated what we requested before, because, based on utilization. So if everybody wanted to travel, then if there is not enough money allocated, then we can easily say we don't have it in the budget. I think it should be in the line item.
Okay, I mean, that's something that, you know?
Was that something you talked with, with Ms. Somerville or leadership? I don't know exactly how we came up with that number, but I think, you know, I think consensus is everybody would like to see it, and that if council members want to, you know, address that with, with Margot, that'd be fine. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is my challenge. This is council's budget. Council hasn't come together to discuss our budget priorities, what our goals and objectives are, and what we need to meet them. It sounds like the administration said, okay, this is what your budget's going to be. This is council's budget.
I'm not sure if I?
We didn't meet with them, though.
Yeah, that's right.
I understand.
And you do have, as you are taking now, you have the opportunity to, to review these.
Excuse me, please.
Great.
Again, this is, I'm saying, not the President's budget, I'm saying council's budget. Not the President's budget, council's budget. Council has not come together to determine any kind of goals, objectives, and what our budget would be to, to meet them. And so this has always been my challenge when we get to this point. And to hear that, you know, a decision was made on our education and our travel is, is challenging. I mean, we still have, we passed legislation to fund putting the budget online, never got an answer on that, last year. And, and this is important, because we know that we're talking about equity, and this council hasn't had any training. Last year, the proposal was that we put in the budget $33,000 for training for council. But we, we haven't had any discussion. So I'm challenged when it comes, when we say that this is council's budget, but yet council has had no discussion on what our goals and objectives are and how we're going to fund them. So before we are asked to approve this budget, I know we have to the end of the month.
Great.
I'd like for council to be able to sit down and go over what our goals and objectives are, and what it's going to take to fund them to achieve those. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Fusco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, there was a budget discussion with President Somerville, and in terms of, that's why we're here today, to discuss this and what the priorities are. And, and obviously, we have a couple weeks here to work with in terms of developing exactly what those numbers are. The basis, as typical with budgets, it's based on history and, and what has been spent in the past. That's the way it's been for the last 20 years, or probably even beyond, in terms of what's historically spent. There's, I don't see any, any point in, in overfunding something if it's, in all likeliness, not going to be spent. There is money in the education fund, we can amend that budget.
Right, exactly. Council does have the ability to, to amend the budget. You know, we basically looked at that line item, and because it hadn't been utilized as much as what we budgeted last year, that was an area that we, that we, you know, sought to, you know, to bring in line with the historical amount that we saw in 2019.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, to Mr. Neal's point, though, I'm, as a new council member, you know, I didn't know some of those line items. So the breakdown would definitely be helpful to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have that by Monday, I would think.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Amobian?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make one correction. We could talk about historical budgets, but one of the items we put in there one year was $15,000 per councilperson. And we can have ups and downs in that. I mean, one year, a councilperson used it for leadership background. No one is going to leadership background every year, okay? So that's $7,000, $8,000, whatever it is now. So the budget is going to change based on utilization. That's why we said $15,000 set aside for each councilperson. And if it's not used, it sits there. And if you look at the budget next year, then we tell you what we want. I'm not really sure who was in this meeting that Councilman Fusco was talking about. I don't recall us sitting down and talking about our budget. So will you please let us know the breakdown? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
I believe so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to Holly, and thanks, Sarah, thanks, Bob.
You bet.
All righty, we're going to move on now to page oh eight oh one. And we're going to be talking to our folks from the municipal court. If you would please come, and Mr. Fricker, if you'd like to introduce the respective players here.
So we do have Montrela Jackson here, who is the Court Administrator, and we also have Judge Walker as well.
So I want to make sure everyone has a copy of our mission statement, our statistics, and our goals and accomplishments. Does everyone get a copy of this? It should be a paper copy. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Budget and Finance Committee. It's my pleasure to present to you today. I'm Montrela Jackson Court Administrator. I'd also like to introduce the Honorable Presiding Administrative Judge Nicole Walker, who's with us today.
Hi, everybody.
On behalf of the court, we're delighted to review the accomplishments of the court and the budget goals. You should have information in your package about the, the budget amounts in terms of how we, our expenditures from 2019, as well as our new proposal. If you look at the first page of the, it starts with Akron Municipal Court Judges, Municipal Court at a Glance, you will see compared to, when you look at Dayton and Toledo Municipal Courts, in terms of our budget proposal for this year, we do a lot with, with less, as we usually do. You see there that although our court has 55,000 new filings a year compared to Dayton, who has 34,000 a year, our budget is barely over 180,000 more than Dayton, with us having the same number of judges. And then also, you will see some of our statistics there on the top in terms of our case, cases we had. Our numbers seem to be very similar to last year. We had about 20,000 traffic cases, 11,000 civil cases, and 11,000 criminal cases. And just to highlight some of our major goals, which we can elaborate on the end, of course, we still would like to pursue a new court, building a new facility, as well as we were awarded $195,000 to, to upgrade our case management system. And also, this year, we have a $210,000 payroll subsidy for our probation staff. So just to keep it brief, that's a quick overview of what I'd like to share. If there's anything you'd like us to elaborate on, or if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Questions or comments? Mr. Malik?
Thank you very much, both of you, for being here. When you talk about the number of overage cases and keeping those to a minimum within Supreme Court guidelines, what is the current status of that?
So I actually, I pulled those statistics before I came, just to see in terms of our, our clearance rates, it's which, it's what, how the, the Supreme Court tracks those. And if you're 100%, of course, you're good. So our court, our, we're at a 97.1% clearance rate for 2019, which means of all of our cases across the court, we clear them within the time requirements of the Supreme Court 97% of the time, which is a good, good rating.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Amobian?
I don't know if this is part of this budget or not. I know that you've been setting aside funds for your hopeful new location one day. And is that reflected, is this a section, or is that something?
That's going to be on page eight dash two.
Okay, so I'll wait for that question. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Malik?
Another thing is, in terms of eviction cases, you know, this has obviously been a topic of much discussion, and I know there are rules that are, have been going through the process. One thing that has been discussed, and is present in other communities, is a dedicated housing magistrate or a housing court itself. Is that something that would be possible within an existing capacity? Or is that something that would require additional resources? And what would those resources maybe look like?
I'll, I'll take that as?
Okay, thanks, Jessica.
That has been something that throughout the years has been floated around. I will tell you that it was set by statute for the Cleveland Housing Court. What it would take would be, obviously, a bigger facility, more personnel, and possibly the addition of a seventh judge. At this time, my colleagues and I don't feel that the population in, in general for the Akron Municipal Court District supports that. But as we are looking to a new building, that would definitely be something that we could look at to have a dedicated, you know, magistrate for, for example, without having to go to that step to, to a judge. But I think that right now, our magistrates do a great job of managing that docket, and as we all know, I mean, it's a high docket.
Thank you.
I know, it was probably 2003, we were floating this idea around, and, and it did, it came back, it came back to dollars and space. And I think, I think the general public still likes the idea, but dollars and space. All right, any questions from, we're going down to eight two, moving on to eight three?
Eight two, eight, eight two?
Maybe just for our new members, eight two, you want to talk about professional services, what that would mean? We have a few folks that, this is our first year with us, eight two?
So eight two is the Special Projects Fund that has been receiving a certain portion of the, the court fine collections in order to construct a new courthouse. So that, that fund has been operational for a number of years. It has a balance of about $11 million in it right now. So as we move towards building a new courthouse, we have allocated money this year for design on a new courthouse. And then also, if we were to actually issue bonds this year, we allocated a little bit of money for debt service on those bonds.
We kind of had that conversation yesterday as well. Computer-related expenses for municipal judges?
So those are on page eight dash four, which is the AMSIS fund. So there's an AMSIS fund, both within the judge's budget and then also within the municipal court clerk's budget. So this is, the one on eight dash four is the judge's side. And that, that is their computer fund that also accumulates a certain amount of fines are dedicated towards technology, information, technology expenditures. So the amount that you see this year is dedicated towards that large amount, that 616 is for the new case management system that the courts are looking at.
Okay, not purchased yet, but looking at.
Correct.
Okay.
And we also have the, the technology grant funds I mentioned that goes with that as well.
And that was how much?
$195,000.
Okay, and that would go with the 616?
Yes.
Questions or comments? What are we using right now as far as, as far as case management?
I'll defer to?
For the courts? There is something called AMSIS, and it is, our clerk can probably speak more to it. I can tell you from the judge's point of view, we do not have a case management system for, for what we do on our side. So Mr. Larry can speak about the AMSIS program. But right now, as we sit here, the judges do not have a viable case management system of any kind.
What? I don't understand that.
Sir, I don't understand it either. All I can tell you is, I am endeavoring to, to change that, and that's why we sought out that $195,000 grant from the Supreme Court of Ohio, which we received. We also sought out and received $70,000 from the National, State Justice Institute, for the National Center for States to come in and help us in developing something that is both, you know, user-friendly to the judges, and also, we have to think about our community and, and what their needs are. And right now, their needs and equal access to justice are not being met.
Our existing system is from the 1980s, so that's when it was created.
So, as, as someone who's totally naive to what you need, is it okay to?
Yeah, please, sir.
Can you explain what you would like to have in a system that would be helpful to the court?
Sure, so as a threshold matter, we would like to have a case management system where, first of all, you could easily see what fines and costs are owed per individual instead of per case. Because the way that our paper-file systems are, and some of this has to be done this way pursuant to the rules of superintendents, but if you've got a criminal case and three traffic cases, there's nothing that, that I can, when I'm on the bench, tell an individual who's in front of me, well, how much do I owe in total? I don't have the ability to tell that person that. They have to go, nor can they, can they look it up. They have to look it up, each individual case, to be able to glean how much they owe in total in fines and costs. We don't have the ability to have people make incremental payments online. Right now, we only have the ability to, if you can pay the total amount online with a credit card, then you can do that. But to be able to make incremental payments, you cannot. We'd like to have a complete criminal case history. As we sit here today, when I'm making bond determinations on misdemeanor cases, where we don't have pre-trial services doing those interviews like they do with the felonies, I either have to get on the Ohio Courts Network myself, which I do, before I take the bench to run people's criminal histories, or I can only rely on what we call a blue sheet, which our court runs, and those are just, those are just convictions out of Akron. So anything else that's happened outside of Akron's jurisdiction, I have no ability to, to find out about an individual. So that's just a basic.
So is there a court system in Ohio that has the kind of computer technology system that you are referring to that would give you the information you need to do your job?
Yes, Councilwoman Amobian, there are. And in fact, I believe that we are only one of two courts left in the state of Ohio that are still running a legacy system like what we have right now.
So how much would it cost?
Well, that's what we're?
Yeah, we, we're still exploring. There's several vendors we've talked to. There's several other courts that are looking at the same technology as well.
But if there are courts already doing what you're saying you need, what did their system cost them? Do you, you don't know that?
Well, that's not information that the other courts are readily wanting to share, because it's contractual in nature. But I will tell you that we have been in contact with Cleveland Municipal Court, because they have implemented the system that we're looking to implement, which is Tyler Technologies, it's Odyssey. And we are in contract negotiations, because it's my understanding that the county safety forces are utilizing Tyler, and I know that that's a process that's ongoing. We have an idea of what these systems cost. And then the more important part, too, is, once it's implemented, what it costs to maintain going forward. Because you want to make sure that you've got the money in place to maintain these systems and keep them up to date going forward, or else they become obsolete, and then, you know, five, 10 years, they're no good anymore.
So the range is from $600,000 to $2 million, and it depends on whether you go with a cloud-based system or you go with servers on-site. If you go with the cloud, it's a cheaper system. And then the, the vendor, you know, they do all the maintenance, so then, like the judge shared, you still have those ongoing costs.
Did you say 1980?
1986, I think, 87.
Okay, okay. Questions or comments, or Mr. Fusco?
This, I, I hope no one here is shocked. I really do, I hope no one here is shocked. Just last year, we heard you come in and say this, and the year before.
That was right after the cyber virus.
And there's been a resistance from the clerk, and we understand that, and the clerk's going to be next, and I think we should have that conversation. But the thing of it is, this should not be a surprise, because we talked about this very same issue last year, and how the courts cannot communicate with the probation department, they can't communicate with the safety forces, and whenever decisions are made, it's all done with pen and paper. This is not a surprise, folks, so I don't want anyone to be shocked or be surprised. This is, you've been talking about it for some time.
Let Mr. Fusco finish.
Thank you, I'm done, thank you.
Mr. Malik?
So when, maybe if we take a step back here, you know, Toledo here, when we look at the 11 million versus the 5 million for Akron and the 4.9 million for Dayton, apart from technology, what is Toledo getting for its additional investment of 6 million? Is it primarily technology? Is it additional probation? Is it additional, is it clearing cases faster? What, what are the differences that we're looking at here? Because it seems to be a significant order of magnitude.
That's, I can answer, that's a good question. So Toledo has a housing court, they also have double the staff that our court has. They have 90 staff, and there are some other, just they have a seventh judge with their housing court. And then if you look at the volume in terms of their caseload, they have 94,000 new filings, so their caseloads are higher than our court. So a lot of that, this is their operating budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bard, if you have a comment? Mr. Neal?
Thank you, sir. In regards to, you know, the comments about technology, my concern is that none of these things kind of stand alone. And we were supposed to get an update on what the? the city's technology strategy was. Now, I don't know if that was discussed yesterday, but, um, so we know, so we can know that we're making the right investments. I mean, I, I just heard the statement about servers or cloud and I could go back, um, to when we were looking at our system. It was all like, oh no, we don't want to put anything in the cloud, we want to keep them on the servers and we know what problems we've had with cyber attacks. Servers are the way to go. We need somebody who really understands best practice in government and best practice in technology to give this council a thorough understanding of where we need to go as a city, so that we can help keep track on some of this. Because again, I mean, the reason why everybody comes to us is because we're, we're the ones that oversee the city's budget. And so that we can make sure that we're staying on track and putting things in place so that we can be a progressive city. I mean, it's, I was over, um, talking with Judge Odom about the, the evictions and he mentioned how antiquated the system is. And I mean, there's, there's still, I mean, I'm still having problems with my email. So I think one of the things that we'd like to have in here, and I don't know if you guys had this discussion yesterday.
IT's tomorrow.
Okay, so IT, yeah, we, we need to know, we were supposed to be given a strategic plan back, back, I think when Rich, was it Smolt? And then, then the gentleman that was working for the county and all of a sudden quit? We haven't gotten any kind of update. And we, to make these purchases independent of one another and not knowing if our systems, uh, can be better integrated is, is going to be challenging at, at best.
Yeah, Mr. Malik? Let, let me speak to that real quickly. Uh, we, we have been putting together a plan, working with, uh, our consultant Sikich, uh, and a person named Ken Klicka, who, you know, was involved with some of the city's infrastructure back several years ago and knows it very well and has developed a plan. So, uh, we will set up a time, sometime in the near future, to have him come in and brief counsel on what our plan is.
And if I may just add, we have met with Mr. Klicka from Sikich and I want to thank the city for, um, that resource because he has been very valuable in just giving us a broad view of, of some of the things we need to think about going forward.
Sorry to go back to this, but, Your Honor, it sounds like we have a, you know, pretty significant issue, but we're kind of in a holding pattern. And we're also in a holding pattern, it seems, on the new building and have been for a little while. Is there a solution here that would be possible? I mean, it sounds like we have a huge, not huge, but a significant amount of money from fees that we're laying away for a building that's in a holding pattern, but it makes sense to dip into that for technology expenses to try to, you know, I know that, you know, fixing a data server is not as attractive as building a new building and I understand the importance of a new building, but what are, is that a solution we can look to? Are there other solutions we can look to?
Well, I, I, quite candidly, uh, when my colleagues elected me presiding judge for twenty twenty, I told them that my main focus was this technology component because I think it is so very critical. And although so is a new building and we all, we've known this, everybody in this room, uh, but right now, what we need is to utilize the grant dollars that we've been given because if we don't, we lose them. So that's a significant amount of money. So, um, as far as paying for it, I believe we have that under, do you want to talk about the, the fund that we're-
Sure, so the special project funds, they're set up by journal entry, the judges, and statutorily, they can only be used for the purpose they were created for. So for the new case management system, that would come out of the AMSIS fund, that money can only be used for computerization of the courts. And so the judges, the court have been very good stewards of letting that money build so that we have sufficient, um, revenues each year to cover that. And then the special projects fund for the building would be similar. It can only be used for the efficient operations of the court.
Thank you.
I mean, I know we're talking about a building. I'm with you. Something about our technology before we even think about a building.
And, and obviously, the technology is something we can bring with us, so.
Are there questions or comments?
Well, I'd just like to ask a simple question. Well, do we have the authority to change how funds are allocated to allow them to use a percentage of funds from one budget to another?
Well, not, I don't think from grants we would not, no.
Yeah, my understanding is no, they, they, the judges have journal entries, as, as Jackson talked about, they control how the court collections are distributed across the various funds.
Yes, statutorily, that's given, that's the privy of the judges in terms of when they create the special project funds.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Malik?
But just as a general matter, that doesn't mean that more money couldn't be allocated, whether from the general fund or from another source, to address this issue, right?
If the dollars were there, yes, they could be allocated from the general fund.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this seems to be getting, it seems to be getting a lot of interest from over here on this side.
Thanks, I, I welcome counsel's interest, definitely.
And obviously, you know, we're trying to keep our hours, our, our meetings to two hours here, so not, we're not cutting, cutting off, but thank you, we do know this now, we have that knowledge to be, uh, armed with as we move ahead here. Okay, we were where, eight, uh? Eight-five?
I think we've been discussing eight-four. We're on eight-five now.
Mr. Frick, or anything special we, uh, on eight-five regarding, uh? Five, we would need to know, numbers, look.
No, this is a, this is a special fund, uh, that use, that's used to purchase some additional supplies and, uh, travel and education within the judge's budget, so.
Court security, eight-six. Uh, on, as far as eight-seven goes, that's, uh, is that the independent classes that they like to go out and get a hotel room and guys are served for a weekend?
So the last year, that the seventy-five hundred dollars was spent on, so it was distributed for metro passes for, and maybe Ms. Jask- Jackson can speak more to this. So was, this was the metro passes?
So this is a fund where the clerk collects all the fees related to the offenses and then the money goes into a pot and certain percentages are divvied up to different, uh, entities. So this is a portion of court gets back. We can only use this for what's been identified and this is, and the judge probably can speak to the specifics of it, but it's related to treatment programs for indigent, um, defendants.
Okay.
So to, just, uh, to answer your question, um, Councilman, yes, that, it would be for things like the three-day driver intervention program.
Okay, cool, thank you. Mr. Imobian?
If we can go back to the security, what is, oh, oh-eight, oh-six? What are we talking about here?
So that is a special collection fund and typically what we do is it is used for court security and the security for the court is handled by our police department. So typically, we will transfer a certain amount of overtime from our general fund over and use these dollars to cover a small portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, that brings us to, I believe, uh, nine-oh-one, Administration for Municipal Court. Thank you very, very much and, um, my guess is we'll be talking here in the near future, so thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Okay, Steve will move on to-
Go ahead.
Municipal Court.
So we have Jim Larria and Tammy D. Antonio from the Municipal, Municipal Court Clerk's Office.
Very good, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have with me Tammy D. Antonio, my chief financial officer. I'm Jim Larria for the new, uh, Councilman. I'm your Akron Clerk of Courts. And, um, twenty nineteen was a very busy year for our part of the court. We were up, uh, especially in, uh, civil division and you've read why some of that was busier, but our actual grocery receipts in civil alone was up over a million dollars, our grocery receipts. Uh, money paid to the city of Akron was up about a quarter of a million out of those same civil receipts. So just in civil alone, um, we were very, very busy this year. The rest of the stuff, as you heard from, uh, Montreal Jackson, is that we were pretty flat everywhere else. We were down a little bit in parking, uh, we were down a little bit in traffic and we were down a little bit in criminal, but not enough that we've lost a lot of revenue. It was pretty much, so, pretty much revenue central. The big difference this year was in our civil and it basically allowed us to have, uh, about a million dollars in, in grocery receipts increase. If you look, um, if, if you, I think you have my annual report. Um, if you look at that report, you can see for yourself and, and in there, I do give you a five-year review of all the filings, of, of the monetary amounts and what the actual cost to the city was versus, uh, what we've done one year to another. So when you look at the, the big picture, we're doing more with less, period. Both the judges and myself, um, are doing a lot more and we're doing it at less cost to the city because in the end, um, when you look at what our cost of operation was between the judges and my office and what we turned back to the city, we actually reduced our overall net general fund cost to the city by more than fifty thousand dollars. And I think that's a tremendous savings in one year without really having any kind of actual cuts. I mean, that was just strictly administratively of what the work we've done, the revenue we've brought in and how we've maintained our, our level of expenses. So the Akron Municipal Court gives you a lot of bang for your buck, it really, we really do. Um, we're a very busy court, we're the fifth largest court in the state consistently and, um, our gross receipts generally, uh, are between ten and twelve million dollars a year. So, um, we're, we're, we're a pretty busy place. With that being said, um, I think the easiest way is just to entertain questions and go through our operations as, as we go through here, I don't need to ramble, so I'll, I'll open it up to questions.
Alrighty. Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Barter?
So, I see the, uh, budget for two thousand nineteen was six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but yet we only spent twenty percent of that, it seems like. Is, is this related to what we were discussing before with a, maybe a new computer upgrade?
Well-
Or should we?
Referring to oh-nine-oh-two?
Yes.
Oh, that's the AMSIS fund, that's, yeah, basically what we didn't do is obviously buy a new operating system. That's something we've been, been in the process of doing really for the last three years. And I've got to give the judges credit because we went out in eighteen, we were really ready to buy something and they decided to take a step back because we didn't have the full information of what was the best way to go, what we were really getting for that, because this investment is going to be probably over a million dollars. And, and so if you're looking about a substantial change in your, in your automation, you want to make the right decision. So I applaud the judges for taking a step back, re-looking at it, asking for outside help that has come in and started to review our processes to try to give us the most economic advantage in moving forward with a new system. Our system is thirty, thirty-three years old as far as from a software operating system. Now, that doesn't mean that our hardware and stuff hasn't been upgraded generally going through about every five years. So our hardware is in pretty good shape, although it's at the end of its length because we've continued to delay doing any real upgrades on our hardware because we're looking at doing a new software system and we're trying to figure out, well, as they said earlier, do we go to a cloud, do we buy new hardware stuff to run it? What's the best route to go? So that's kind of the decisions that we're trying to come to now. Go ahead.
Uh, if that was the case, twenty twenty has a lower budget than nineteen.
Well, I-
So wouldn't, if this thing's going to be like a million dollars, wouldn't we-
Well, I think part of that was encumbered prior, in prior years, it hasn't been spent yet. As far as for the computer, for the computerization, if that's what you're looking at. You're looking at the AMSIS funds?
Yes.
Yeah, they, there was an order that went through back in, I believe it was in eighteen, twenty eighteen, uh, that put a lot of that cost in play. So, um, I haven't put anything additional for the actual soft, for the actual software this year until we actually find out what the numbers are and see what the difference is between what was already been appropriated or authorized and what the difference might be. So, yeah, that number's kind of just hanging out there.
The balance in the fund on the clerk's side is about seven hundred twenty-two thousand dollars right now. So there is enough room to appropriate extra in the, on the clerk's side of the AMSIS budget.
Sorry, Mr. Frick, can you repeat that number?
Seven twenty-two.
Seven twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, that's the current balance in the fund.
I'll go to Mr. Neal and then Mr. Fusco.
Thank you, thank you. So, it's obvious that, that we have had, and we've built up some funds, as was previously mentioned, and some of this is, um, this, the software is quite old, as we've learned. There has not been any movement forward on that. But the question is, this is basically taxpayer-owned equipment, right? Taxpayer-owned equipment, okay. Is there a policy for this taxpayer-owned equipment in terms of employees doing outside work on taxpayer-owned equipment? Is there a policy within the department?
The city has a policy, we try to follow, yeah. They're not-
Okay, thank you, well, I, yeah, I just wa- was, was curious because from, I'm under the impress, I've, I've secured this article that there was a problem. I do happen to have, and I'll give this to you if you'd like and share with some of my colleagues, in two thousand and nineteen January, uh, Mayor Horrigan has, uh, issued a computer usage policy and this computer usage, usage policy states that personal use of the internet, intranet email and online services is, is prohibited, expressly prohibited. However, unfortunately, from what I understand, your, uh, Mr. Gale, uh, had a problem because he was working on a city of Akron-owned computer system on, on outside, uh, operation that he's, that, that, that he's contracted with another community to do work. It was hacked on a city of Akron system and two hundred and eight thousand dollars was lost. I, I don't know where that's at today, but this is an article that I found from two thousand nineteen, uh, in the fall and there was a hack on the city of Akron. Is Mr. Gale still with the, the, the clerk's office?
I was made aware of that, he has been disciplined, it has been handled, he no longer is an official, acting in another capacity. He had to either give up that job or his job with me. Uh, and so, yes, I disciplined that and that's been resolved.
There was, just to make it clear for everyone here, Mr. Gale, and he says here that, um, previously said that, um, because of the fiscal officer's position, supposed to be part-time, he has worked full-time hours in addition to his full-time position with the municipal court. So he's basically working on outside work on a city of Akron computer system. The city of Akron computer system was hacked, two hundred and eight thousand dollars, it was, it was ransomware, what have you, I, from what I understand. Uh, and so that, that township has not received their funding, they're, they're trying to sort out who's, where the insurance goes, but this was on a city of Akron computer system.
And I want to, we want to, we must-
And we're funding, and we're funding, we are funding this system.
Well, and while we want to, want to try to stay with the numbers, can we have, I mean, we can have more conversation about this.
That's fair, that's fair.
Okay, later on.
Thank you very much, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, that's very fair.
Just want to try to stay with the budget.
Sure, sure.
But we can have more conversation.
I'll just, I'll just share this paperwork with us.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Some of my colleagues here on counsel.
Mr. Imobian?
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Lar, Ms. Larria, getting back to oh-nine-oh-two, could you talk about what you are hoping to do with the computer, software, hardware and in, in relation to what the judge talked about? Because it sounds like you guys need a system that will-
Well, yes, we use a joint system.
Okay.
And to be truthful, the system when it was initially purchased was more of a, a clerk's-based operation and so the automation was, was for the most part done for the clerk's office. We have a very good financial package on this operation. Um, I've been able, you know, I've been clerk for over twenty years. I've been able, you know, I've been clerk for over 20 years, and have worked with this system almost since the beginning. And we've expanded things. When you talk about communicating with other divisions, we do all that. We communicate with the BMV, BCI, the JO. You know, we, we're pretty seamless, the Ohio Court Network, OCN. So we do the, the BMV, we do all the modern things that all the courts do. The problem is, is there's not really a package for the court to manipulate that data. It's basically, you have to go in and look at case-by-case operations to see what you want to see on a defendant. And the judge was correct, you, you have a hard time if you have a defendant that has multiple cases, and you're trying to figure out, you know, what does that person totally owe? Because we have a lot of people that have multiple cases. And so that gets a little confusing at times.
So could you, can I stop you for a minute, please? Just, just so I understand, and I know we've talked about this for years, an individual will come to the court with multiple cases, and there is no way for the judge to discern which case he or she would like to...
No, they have a, a case jacket for the cases before that judge, but that person may also have active cases with three other judges. And what they do a lot of time now is they try to consolidate those to that one particular judge, so that they get all the cases at one time. But there are times when, you know, the defendant has, and a lot of times they'll finish, and they may owe money on old cases going back years. And to try to give a person a quick number when they go to the, the court, and it's, it's crazy. They literally have to come down to us, and then we have to go through, and we can run all their cases, and then have to go through each, it is a case-by-case review that you have to go through and see how much is owed on each case.
And your system for the clerk's office can't change that piece of it?
Well, the software, like I said, was developed in 1987. There's a lot better means out there that I think will allow that data to be cross-referenced a little easier than to try to rebuild our current system. I'm in 100% agreement with the judges moving forward with a new operation. I realize that the life expectancy of our system has probably outlived normal usage when you look at, you know, how often software is updated or changed.
So if you have...
We're running really the original stuff. But it is a very good financial package. It has allowed us to expand and modernize in the sense of being able to communicate with everybody. We're doing e-filing with the Ohio State Patrol. We just finished with the city of Farallon with their citations. So we, we do have capability to have a modern, as far from a clerk, clerk's perspective, to do all the things, you know, other courts are doing. The problem is, is that the judges don't have the ability to manipulate that same data to how they need to read it.
Sure.
And that's what we're trying to put together now.
If you have $722,000...
Pardon?
You have $722,000.
Correct.
And they, and the system that they were just talking about is valued approximately a million dollars, they said.
Right, and we, we're planning on split that cost. We've generally split any kind of the major, and I've been trying to save money like the rest, and trying to, you know, save for the rainy day, so that when we're ready to move forward, you know, we'll be able to pretty much hopefully split that cost for the, for the new software.
So this $722,000 is for the computer project for the court, for the clerk's...
Partly, yes. I mean, I, I do have, I do pay my ongoing needs for my side of the automation operation. I'm constantly updating. I had to do a rewrite that I pay some consultants for to come in and rewrite our communication connection, like with the BMV. They completely changed stuff, sent stuff up, and didn't inform all the users in the state. We all kind of got stuck that we were no longer able to communicate with them, so then we had to pay to have this redesigned, so that we could communicate with the BMV. Those kind of things. Those are just ongoing expenses.
Let me just ask one question. Mr. Fricker?
Yes.
This money can only be used with the approval of the clerk, the seven twenty-two, to go toward the computer system that will help?
That is correct. So it is, it is designated a certain, and I don't know what the percentage is, but a certain percentage of all of the fines collected by the court are designated for the clerk's AMSS Fund and for the judge's AMSS Fund. So those monies are distributed as these revenues come in, they are, by these journal entries are dedicated towards those purposes.
So you're saying that if, if they wanted to get a system in place, a new system, that would cost approximately a million dollars, maybe more?
Right.
And I realize there are some ongoing expenses, that based on what the clerk's office has and what the court, the judges have, they could really come together today or tomorrow and work this out?
That is correct. Yeah, which they are, they are looking at a system, it's just they are, you know, I think it requires a little bit further evaluation, and also how it fits in with the city's overall IT plan, and getting into all those things like, is it cloud-based, or is it server-based, those types of things. So they are looking at it.
Well, how long they gonna look at it?
Yeah. I, I think we're an hour with per...
You know, and the other thing with all this is the building we're at, we do have to take into account of our wiring and things within our current building, which, you know, it was built in the 60s, and some of our coding has, you know, legs behind on some things for purposes of, you know, 21st century, you know, automation requirements. So there's some things that, you know, we've got to do some workarounds with. So it's, it's, you know, it's an ongoing process.
Let me recog, Mr. Neal, I did say I was going to recognize you, and then we do have to...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Fricker. I'm sorry, I was looking around. If everybody else sees where the $722,000 is on your reports, that's cool. I couldn't find it. I was trying, okay. I, I guess, I just want to... Do we have any idea of the costs with the antiquated system with the judges, the way they have to look up stuff now? But my, my other concern is, what is the cost to the systems that are being serviced by the courts? Not just time and monetary, but possibly even in not being serviced properly. I know we may not have those, those figures right now, but, you know, because when I think of 30 years, I mean, I'm not using the same computer I used 30 years ago, and I, I really don't know how you can, how you can function. I mean, a lot of stuff you can't even upgrade. They don't even provide upgrades for it anymore. I mean, so, I mean, I know we as a city try to pride ourselves on saying we saved here, but you could only save for so long. So whatever, this right here is really...
There's so much you could say, Councilman Neal. I understand. It's kind of like having a Model T for our fire trucks, so...
Yes, sir. So I, I, I mean, I, maybe everybody else has a, a better grasp, but I really want, it's one thing just to spend the money, but I also know this, if we've got a cloud-based system for our court system, we've got servers for maybe council. I, I think with these decisions as a city, I know, I know the court system has certain jurisdictions, but as a city, I'm really looking forward to tomorrow for us getting a true strategic plan on what our, how our technology is going to be integrated, and protect us against some of the challenges that we have right now. Because we could be trying to do a good thing, but still be disjointed when it comes to our overall service, sir. I'm kind of mind-blown, really.
Thank you. I'll go, two more comments, Mr. Malik, and then Mr. Fusco, and then we do need to move on. But I think this is something we're going to revisit.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief, because I think the last thing that the court and the judges need is another frustrated attorney. But what I would say is that it sounds like this is something that should happen as soon as possible, and it sounds like it's not appropriated for 2020 in this current budget. And it sounds like this is something we would want to at least see if it could be done in 2020, if that trigger could be pulled in 2020. Right now, we're sort of basically saying it's not going to happen until 2021, if that's my understanding.
No, no, I, I think we're both on the same page to try to get a contract in place and get a, an operating system in place before the end of the year. Now, it's going to take some time, because you've got 30 years of conversion as far as to convert over to the new system. So there's, there's going to be some time lag as far as, quote, having it up and running. But I think it's in both of our goals, is to try to nail down and find the correct software to make us, you know, into the 21st century, and have the most modern, up-to-date software that's available on the market. And, I mean, we're both committed to that, and it's, it's just making sure we make the right decision. That's, I mean, it is, to me, it's, it's probably the biggest expenditure that I'll make in my, you know, 20-some years of operating the clerk's office. And so we want to get it right, because we've got, like Montrell said, we've got to be able to take it wherever we go, however that ends up. But our current building is really not conducive to, you know, a full system makeover, so to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fusco, and then we will...
Sticking to the budget, thank you, Mr. Chair. On page nine-two, now, just to review, in 19, there was an expenditure, 2019 budgeted 668, and then actual expenditures was 93, and now in 2020 budgeted, budgeted, I guess, is 297, so there's a $300,000 gap or so that I'm seeing. Is that, can you explain it to me a little bit?
Right. We just, we did not appropriate the entire balance. As I mentioned, the balance in the fund is $722,000. So if the system moves forward, then we could move to appropriate the rest of that balance in the 2020 budget. We would have to go for an amendment to council.
A budget amendment to that.
But there are sufficient dollars within the fund, you know, within both funds, I should say, because it will be split with the judge's AMSS Fund.
Okay.
There are sufficient dollars to spend in excess of a million dollars.
The seven twenty-two is the combined clerk and?
No, the seven hundred twenty-two is the balance within the clerk's side of the AMSS Fund.
What is the balances of the judge's judicial side?
Uh, let's see what the... Five forty-two on the judge's side.
Five forty-two?
Yep.
Okay, and so, and the, the income for this, the income stream is on the fines that are collected?
Correct.
Right.
Basically, the court assesses $3 per case for the judges, $4 per case for the clerk for computer automation. That, that's, it's like a 60-40 split as far as how that revenue comes in. And, you know, my costs are obviously a little higher, because I'm the one that...
Right.
Operately has to have a solid financial system to track all this money. If, if you look at my report, and you see how many different agencies we pay out every month, and I've got a balance to the penny every month, you know, it's, it's a, it's a work in project to make sure that, you know, because the statutes say, you know, on certain kind of things, you may only take a dollar out of each case, or maybe it's $5 for this, or $3. I mean, so I got to track all that, and then make sure it all gets into the correct fund. So there's a lot of buckets I got to fill.
And work, and work with the judges. Thank you. But in essence, though, just to review, 1.2 million altogether for AMSS budget between the two.
That's what we have available. And that's, and if we go out and blow it all in, in, you know, and the thing comes as I say, a million bucks, but to operate it for next year is another 250,000, already we're going to be in the hole. So we've got to, you know, we've got some decisions to make. We got to figure out long-term maintenance and costs, and all those figured into the operation, and then try to make the best decision.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, when we talk budget, we don't talk about blowing it, anything whatsoever around here. We, but, but thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming over.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All righty. All right, we're going to move on to...
Human resources.
Human resources.
Welcome. Thank you, Chairman to the committee. I'm Donald Rice. I'm the Director of Human Resources. I'd like to take a second and introduce my management staff. These are the people who make me look good on a daily basis, and get a lot of the things that I'm going to talk about, we accomplished last year, done. We have Wendy Weaver, our benefits manager. We have Stacy Doty, our employment selection manager, and we have Myra Snipes, who is our EEO and training manager. Last year was a watershed year, I will say, for the Department of Human Resources. Can you guys hear me? It was a watershed year for the Department of Human Resources. We had a lot of accomplishments. We've moved very steadily towards the goal of providing full-service HR to the city of Akron. And I'll just give you a kind of a very short synopsis of some of the things that we've accomplished this year. Basically, we've worked and collaborated with the Akron Police Department to implement new strategies in the selections of the police officer class, collaborated with the YMCA to establish a fitness program for the pre-employment fitness program for our recruits. We came to you, to the city council this year, to raise the maximum hiring age for, to target candidates who may be looking for a new career, and who may have recently retired or moved on from the military. In the area of employee benefits, we had a safety supervisor that saved 75% on a private consultant contract, and we brought that in-house. We rolled out Paladina Health to our employees, which I think is one of the most significant additions to, to our healthcare plan in recent memory. We rolled out flexible spending accounts for our employees, and we also have promoted deferred compensation. And finally, finally, as I would think Ms., Mrs. Weaver is very happy about, we had an online enrollment for our benefits program. In the area of EEO and training, we basically implemented the city's first, and I think this is a great thing, our first workforce development program. It's a partnership between the city of Akron and Stark State College, where in the last semester, we had 45 of our employees enrolling classes tuition-free at Stark State, and they took a total of about 240 hours at Stark State University. We're continuing that program in 2020 and 21. I, I think that's a very significant employee benefit for our, for our staff. And we've also done a lot of work in the community. We've did hugs and gloves for Akron area schoolchildren. We gave out more than, we served more than 800 children in our hugs and gloves program over the holidays. We targeted more than 300 families, received gift cards through that same initiative. We provided financial literacy, this is very important also. We provided financial literacy skills to Akron area schoolchildren through a grant that we received, and we've also partnered with, to do financial literacy for adults. We have done a lot. We get a lot done with a very small staff. I commend them on a daily basis for the amount of things that we have done and accomplished this year. I think if we just kind of maintain what we've done this year into the next couple of years going forward, I think we'll have done a great service to the city. With that, I'll open it up to any questions that you guys have.
So between administration and employee benefits, it's what, 19 employees, 18, 19?
More like 16, 17.
Okay. Okay. Budgeted, let's see.
There are 18, yeah. 18 full-time.
I don't count myself, I love it.
Oh. All right. Okay, and again, trying to keep, we're just, for these purposes, you know, we're an hour and 10 minutes, and then we've got three more. But we're trying to keep our comments towards the budget items. If there's any questions that come your way that you can't answer today, I didn't make these comments at the beginning, which I should have. If there's any questions that come your way that you can't answer today, we're just asking for a written response back. But any questions in regards to what we have before us with the budget here? Questions or comments? Guys done a great job, and...
Thank you very much.
I know, I'm, we're, we're just months into the, our new health program, I want to call it...
Paladina?
Paladina, yes. I want to say Palad, if I know that's not a, but anxious to hear how that goes here as we, you know, come upon a...
It's going very well. I tell our employees all the time, if, if you don't have a primary care physician, or if you don't like the primary care physician that you already have, Paladina is a great alternative. How many people have we enrolled, Wendy?
We have over 400.
Wonderful.
Over 400 employees.
Questions, comments for refined folks here?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know what? Not a lot of questions or comments. You must be knocking a dent doing a good job.
We try hard.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you very, very much.
All right, and next we have the Department of Neighborhoods.
Welcome.
Chairman of Budget and Finance, Members of Council. I would like to introduce the Department Neighborhood Assistance Management Team that's sitting directly behind me. Greg Colwell, Code Compliance, Nuisance Compliance. Cheryl Manzlenka, Three One One Call Center. Doug Taylor, along with Thomas Tatum, Housing and Community Services. Thomas is unavailable today. And Dwayne Greger, Housing Code Compliance, the Housing Division. We appreciate the opportunity to come here and talk about some of the great things that happened in two thousand and nineteen in the Department Neighborhood Assistance and some things that we do have planned for two thousand and twenty. Under the Neighborhood Assistance Administration, we scheduled our monthly vacant building registration appeals boards in two thousand and nineteen. A lot of this information I shared with you at the retreat back in January, but twenty-four properties were ordered demolished and eleven were brought down during the year. Ninety-one commercial properties were registered in two thousand and nineteen. Our administrative staff worked with City Council staff and the neighborhood communities, Law Department, Finance Department on processing the fifty-five grants that were awarded for the Akron City Council Neighborhood Partnership. One of our goals in two thousand and twenty, and this is something that's been going on, we've been doing this for years and years and years. In fact, Councilman Fusco started this project back when he was in the Service Director's Office, and we never talk about it, but it's our General Code Enforcement Meeting. And this meeting encompasses the Prosecutor's Office, the Law Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Building Inspection, ECOID, zoning, housing compliance, nuisance compliance, and the Department Neighborhood Assistance and VBR. And we meet every month, and we look at some of the worst-case code compliance issues in the city. And we work on how do we resolve some of these big-time issues with all the people that you have sitting there at the table. So that's, that's in our goals. And also, in two thousand and nineteen, I felt that mention that several divisions in the Department Neighborhood Assistance were involved with the kaboom build at Park East, and that was one of the biggest kaboom parks that we've built in the city of Akron. Under nuisance compliance, one of our two thousand and nineteen accomplishments was the successful implementation of all recommendations from our grass-cutting Kaizen that took place a couple of years ago. And if council recalls, late two thousand and eighteen, we passed an ordinance, and we were able to implement anybody that was cited for a high grass and weed complaint, that they would automatically be placed on that list. So moving into two thousand and twenty, we have these addresses that are already on there. So once we get a complaint, our inspectors that go out there, if the grass exceeds the eight inches, they can go ahead and just order it, cut immediately. We don't have to come back and issue an order and wait seven days to come back and do a reinspection. So that's really going to help us. Two thousand and twenty, a goal, a big goal for us is our tablets that we're utilizing out in the field for our field inspectors as far as code compliance. And in this operating budget, I'm very pleased to say that we have two purchase of, purchased lease of two animal control trucks that are desperately needed in the code compliance department. Under Three One One, two thousand and nineteen accomplishment, staff continues to provide friendly customer service to the public with information about city services while entering service requests electronically to city departments. Another accomplishment in two thousand and nineteen, we were able to decrease our overtime costs at the call center. We decreased it drastically. And, and one of our goals for two thousand and twenty is budget and implement two Cisco ACD agents and two Zoom call recorder, recording license with two PCs. If we get into a situation like we did when the city of Akron got hacked back in January of two thousand and nineteen, we would have the ability to bring in two more individuals from a different department that could sit there and they can answer calls and they could jump right in there and be part of the Three One One call process. Under Housing and Community Services, one of our main goals in two thousand and nineteen was we completed and closed out the three million dollar lead hazard reduction grant in two thousand and, and we also assisted a hundred and twenty-six applications and constructed sixty-five roofs under our emergency roofing program. And the number one goal for two thousand and twenty is to implement and complete the first year of our new three point five, three and a half year, four point six million lead grant that we just recently received. Under Housing and, or under the Housing Division, our main goal that was completed in two thousand and nineteen was complete more timely reviews of administrative penalties to increase the number of fines issued to non-compliant property owners. And that number of administrative penalties that were issued increased from three hundred eight in two thousand and nineteen from two thousand, from two hundred and fifty-five in two thousand and eighteen. And then, under our goals, resume enforcement on over twenty-one known registered landlords to increase the number of registered owners in the rental registration program. This will increase revenues and help clean up our neighborhoods. And you just recently got a handout, I have just been recently working with the golf course, and I apologize if it didn't have the golf course goals and objectives in your packet, but the number one goal in two thousand and nineteen was to make customer service a number one priority. And our main goal in two thousand and twenty is taking over the snack bar and grill. It's gonna be called the nineteen twenty-five Grill to better accommodate our customers and create more revenue for the city of Akron. We have not operated the snack bar at the Good Park Golf Course since the early nineteen ninety, so this is gonna be an opportunity, you know, for us to generate some and increase some revenues and reinvest those revenues back into much-needed improvements that are needed at the golf course. So that's a snapshot of the Department Neighborhood Assistance, and I will entertain any questions that anybody may have.
I know. We could, yours is, yours is one of the departments where we could have a whole lot of conversation and questions and everything else. When, when did, because I know Department Neighborhood Assistance, there's been a lot of, a lot of motion. Has that been over a year now, John? Or has it been less than a year?
The Department Neighborhood Assistance, back in July of nineteen, the Recreation Bureau went into the Office of Integrated Development.
Okay. Okay. So where do we see, numbers-wise, do we see, where do we see those changes reflected in this budget?
So the, so for instance, the Recreation Bureau, we, that was presented yesterday with Integrated Development.
Okay.
But what we did do is we shoot, we showed the history that was formerly in the Department of Neighborhoods in with the same budget. So it's not like we had, you know, kind of a blank slate for two thousand and twenty, you know, in the Integrated Development Department, and then the history would show up here. We moved that history over because that was a place where, really, we just moved the entire division. We didn't break it up or, you know, redistribute any of the employees to different divisions. So the Recreation Department came over intact from Neighborhoods to Integrated Development.
Okay. How many people do we have budgeted that go out in the field under Mr. Greger's work?
Seven.
Seven, okay. And, you know, obviously, is that, is that sufficient?
We've had about the same amount of staff for the last several years, and we can live within that budget.
Okay. Mr. Malik?
I didn't want to cut you off.
No, no, you're fine.
Related to that, I know, what is the number, are we trying to hit inspections of all rental properties every how many years with those inspectors?
We'll get you that information.
Okay.
During the course of the week.
Okay. And to, further to that point, when there's a, when there's a violation that's asserted and we go in and inspect, if we do find a violation, are the, is the landlord charged for the cost of that inspection?
If somebody is fined for a code violation and the repairs aren't done in timely manner, they could be fined.
Okay. But it would be a fine as to the violation? It wouldn't necessarily be covering the cost of the inspection?
It would be a fine based on that violation.
Okay. Is, would, would it be possible to charge for the inspection as well?
I would think that we would have to look into that, and we'd probably take amending legislation.
Okay, thank you.
A mandatory inspection program, where would that be in the budget here?
That would probably be possibly in the revenue portion.
The, I'm sorry, the mandatory inspection.
Yeah.
Program.
That is managed by.
In terms of the rental properties, you mean?
Yeah, Mr. Greger. Mandatory inspection, we still have, you know, our Bad Boy Landlord Program, we're still working that.
Yes, we are.
And so my question was, where's that found in the budget here?
It's part of the overall Housing Division.
Okay.
But the program is in the Housing Division.
Okay.
And that was one of the highlights that I identified with the Housing Division.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at numbers here as opposed, as opposed to some of the objectives and.
So the housing budgets are on eleven oh nine.
Eleven oh nine, okay.
Eleven oh eight. And eleven oh seven. So some of the housing is funded within the general fund, some is, is the assessed housing, which is the Housing Appeals Board, and then there's some housing that is funded out of the CD budget.
And to go back to Mr. Malik's, on mandatory inspection, do they get charged for those inspections?
Yes.
Okay. That is, that is funded primarily, though, if I have a rental unit, I pay fifteen dollars a year for that. That goes into the mandatory inspection program, right?
No, but that goes in the general fund.
It always been that way?
Which is where those, where those inspectors are charged. So they're charged to the general fund, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes, Ms. Imovian?
Question. You mentioned about sixty-five roofs. Where did that, what programs are?
Which ones that?
It says, oh, sorry. Sorry about that. You said something about sixty-five roofs completed in your accomplishments. Where did that come?
Sixty-five?
Roofs.
You're talking about the grants through the City Council?
The roofs.
Oh, roofs. Oh, that's in the Housing Community Services. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
And that is, I'm from the South.
Yes.
So we pronounce it differently, but it's R-O-O-F-S I'm talking about. Are we talking about eleven oh nine, Mr. Fricker?
I don't believe that's that budget, no.
Where would that be?
Ah, there it is. Eleven oh five.
Eleven oh five, okay. So if a person, how did you decide to do that? I'm still trying, I know we have a lot of housing programs, and I can never keep them straight. I know the lead removal, I understand that one. How did people qualify for that in particular?
For the roofing program?
Yes.
If the roof has got holes and water is leaking and it's owner occupied and they meet the income guideline, they could be eligible for a roof replacement.
And there's not an age or anything, just income? And you have a owner occupied?
Is there an age? No. That's strictly income.
No age. Income.
Income.
And owner occupied.
Correct.
Okay. So if you're renting, but you live there, that doesn't qualify you?
No, the rentals don't, although we have incorporated this part of the lead program because it would be foolish for us to remove the lead but not take care of the roof. So we are allowing landlords a fifty-fifty match to participate in that roofing program only if they go through the lead program also.
Okay. The other one you mentioned about the, is it the golf course program? Are they gonna be doing the snacks? How are you gonna staff that?
Well, we will be hiring snack bar attendants, and then we're taking an item to the Civil Service Commission for a golf course.
So there's concession attendants and snack.
Concession attendants, so we will be hiring staff.
Part-time seasonal?
They'll all be seasonal. Can't exceed twenty-eight hours a week.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Malik?
You're welcome.
Should we, I know the golf course was in service, is now the appropriate?
That is correct, yes. So the golf course is in the service budgets, which are later on, you know, we, here, I can find the page.
Yeah, I think it's twelve dash eleven. Should I hold my questions on that until the service section?
No. I mean, you can go, I mean, Mr. Valley is here, he oversees the golf course, yeah.
So I was gonna ask about labor on page twelve dash eleven. It was three full-time employees, and it's six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I wasn't sure whether that also included seasonals and other people. I just wanted to get.
It does, yeah. And that amount is going up for the reasons that Mr. Valley just stated, that we are hiring additional staff to, you know, to work the snack bar operation.
Okay. And how many employees does that six hundred and twenty thousand represent?
I'll get you a number, I'll get you a number on the part-time.
Okay.
So there's approximately, now, I'm not gonna guess, there's, there's people that work out on the greens crew, and then there's the people that work inside the clubhouse as well that, so there's three full-time, but then the majority of the workers are part-time seasonals.
Okay. And then just one final question on this. I was gonna ask with regard to the current expenditures here on twelve dash eleven, I think also with regard to the inter-fund service charges on the next page, I just wanted to know what those were.
The inter-fund service charges on twelve.
On twelve dash thirteen.
Twelve dash thirteen, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, that is the subsidy for the golf course.
Okay.
So that, that covers the cost of the operation that are not covered with the golfing greens fees and cart rental fees collected.
Okay.
And that applies to both Good Park and Mud Run.
What, is, is it a relatively even division there, or is it?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's pretty even between the two.
Thank you very much.
And then I was able to look up for staffing. We have thirty-nine staff in the golf course, but three are full-time.
Okay. That certainly addresses my concern there. Thank you very much.
And that's what that six hundred and twenty thousand covers, okay. Are there other questions?
On, on the roofing, where we did, I think, sixty-seven roofs?
I think there was, we have sixty-five under contract, and we completed forty-four, yeah.
Is that still working off of the list where we had like a backlog of some two hundred?
We've caught up with the backlog.
Okay. So now my question is, how do our constituents know to apply for the program?
I have more than enough people call me on a daily basis.
No, no, I understand, but I still.
So we don't, we don't advertise it, we just would recall. For example, a call that says that we need a roof, or let's say another agency wasn't able to serve them, they would come to us and then make applications.
Yeah, but I, I'd still like, you know, we, we should have some kind of structure.
We'll get you the information, and you can share with your constituents.
Yeah, because, I mean, that, that's one thing I think is counsel, that we could put more money in the budget for.
What page of the budget are we referring to? I'm sorry.
Uh, I guess it's eleven oh five, so.
All righty.
Uh, so we could put more money in. And then, then the other thing is, just, just from a council standpoint, I got a couple more questions, but I noticed some people getting their roofs done, and I noticed some signs saying wind damage or whatnot. If there is, if, if we do know that there's been enough hail or wind damage as a city, it may be to our benefit to encourage our citizens to check with their insurance companies. Because most insurance companies aren't gonna tell their, tell their policyholders, hey, check and see if you have wind damage, because they don't wanna charge, pay those claims. But I'm saying that because, I forget how many years ago it was now, some ten-plus years ago, when we had that hailstorm, a lot of our neighborhoods were literally transformed because people got the claim. So they got new siding, they got new roofs. If this is a way that we can help our citizens, I'm just saying, if we know that we registered for a hailstorm, we may wanna put that out. But I would like to know this, this housing program, because this is something that I get calls for all the time, but I didn't think we had even worked at this, so that right there would be good. The only other thing, Mr. Valley, I don't know if it's in this section at all, you know, we've. The only other thing, Mr. Valley, I don't know if it's in this section at all, uh, you know, we've, we've talked about, is any, is a neighborhood where this, we control and everything, is, is, is it, is the neighborhood grass cutting stuff in this budget?
That's correct, yes it is.
Okay, we, we've talked about any opportunities for neighborhoods to control their own communities. Where are we in the contracts that we've had with folks, because I know every time it seems like we just missed or we just renewed, I would really like for us to be able to empower our individual neighborhoods with being able to bid on those contracts. I think it will also address some of the economic opportunity and equity issues that we've talked about, where are we in those contracts?
We are in year three of a year three, and in twenty twenty-one we'll be rebidding not only, you know, the, the vacant city properties, but the private lots also, and we had, I believe in two thousand nineteen, we utilized at least seven nonprofits to assist us with mowing the vacant city properties and we're hoping to continue and have that many this year and hopefully next year the same way. But they're, the difference in twenty twenty-one is these nonprofits are going to have to bid this work, just like the private contractors.
Okay, and, and last thing, if with the, if we could get a direct correlation of fees collected and what expenditures came out directly related to those fees, as far as the vacant commercial property, which is a new thing and I know, and the.
The VBR, are you referring to, okay.
Yes, sir, and, and, and the rental, uh, so we can see, because when it goes right back to the general fund, it gets lost, we can't really tell the success or the pros and cons of those fees when we collect, thank you.
Any other budget-related questions for Mr. Valley or his team, Mr. Fusco?
Budget, I promise, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Keeping this on task, thank you. Nuisance, uh, under the nuisance budget, eleven oh two and eleven oh three, I noted that both sides have the animal control services. Currently, where are we, we have one full-time, two, I don't recall?
We have two full-time and two part-time.
Two full-time, two part-time. I, I, just like to, budget-related.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, I'd like to, for us to talk amongst ourselves in terms of, you know, like, perhaps looking at, you know, the animal control in terms of volume of complaints and so on and so forth, and seeing if perhaps we need to look at finding more funds for at minimum a part-time person, like in the summertime, in the spring, whenever there's a spike in terms of complaints. So, Mr. Clerk, I mean, Mr., you're the chair, Mr. Chair, I like the S that we consider that.
I, I agree, it's an embarrassment, I mean.
At, at, at least, at least part-time, Mr. Valley, and I'd be happy to talk with you offline on that.
But, Mr. Fusco, we have utilized our, our part-time staff for weekends and off-hours, work with the police department evenings, so we have been doing that the last several years.
Now, I, I know you guys are doing great with what you have to work with, I just, I just don't know if it's, it's adequate. We want to give you more, consider giving you, you guys more, and, and look in, finding a way to do that, that's, I think, something worth more discussion.
Yeah, I think you probably, coming from a council person, a local council person's standpoint, you understand some of our, you know, frustration when it comes to animals and.
I understand.
Okay. Mr. Lefard?
One comment from Mr. Valley, first of all, I love that VBR program, so that's been good. But the general code compliance meetings, enforcement meetings, are those open to the public?
Council's more than welcome to attend, historically, we've had a council person join us and sit on the committee, but we haven't had that for a while, but I'll make sure that you're well aware.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments, thank you so much, and thank you for adjusting Mr. Valley and the rest of the team to some changes, whatnot, this year, but thank you from all of us for what you do and we'll probably be reaching out to you about a few things and we'd always invite you to do back toward us as well. All right, we're going to move on, what do we have next here, building inspection?
We have the Department of Public Service, so the first two budgets are lumped in with service, they're really kind of the, the remnants of what used to be part of public safety, which is our Building Inspection Division, which as you know, went over to the county several years ago, but we still have a code enforcement contract that we budget for every year, so that's what page twelve dash one is. And then we also have our costs that we pay to, to these, to some county for our weights and measures function, so that's on page twelve-two, and no major changes in either one of those for two thousand twenty.
Welcome, Mr. Lattle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee and members of council.
Mr. Lattle, this is Administration Point nine oh.
Pardon?
Administration Point nine oh, is, is that you?
I guess so.
That is pieces of Chris and pieces of other people too.
They have you in all kinds of departments.
So, you know, Pearl, we talked about, uh, there's the, uh, there's many people within the service department that are distributed across multiple divisions.
Okay, I was just curious.
Mr. Lattle.
So are we ready?
Post Slimfast, he's now Point nine oh.
Yes.
Yes, sir, we are ready.
So what, I believe the way it was sent to you, we're going to do Department of Public Service first.
Okay.
And we'll start with the twenty-nine accomplishments, and we'll just go through this and then if we can hold the questions to the end, we'll, we'll, we'll get through it. So, uh, in, in public works, we continue to enhance our city works work order system, the upgrade and enhancement of the ABL, which is the Automatic Vehicle Locator System, the upgrade enhancement of the asset fleet focus. Our, our objectives for twenty twenty is a full implementation of the city works to the store room to replace the Counterpoint Storeroom Software, a full implementation of the asset fleet works, expand our collaboration efforts with surrounding communities and expand our efforts in expanding economic opportunity. In building maintenance, our accomplishments last year, we did a lot of LED upgrades, Reservoir Park Parking Lot, the Cascade Parking Deck, we did levels three and four with our in-house staff. Canal Place Parking Lot, we upgraded to LED. We put a new floor in at Joy Park. The West Side Depot, out there on Copley Road, we put a new roof on the depot, we put LED lights outside. The Ed Davis Community Center, we updated LED fixtures, which was a cost savings of over fifty percent in our electric usage. During the Parks Challenge.
Say fifty or fifteen?
Fifty, fifty percent.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so the payback will be very quick in that, that retrofit. The Parks Challenge Chestnut Ridge, we put a two-hundred amp electrical service in for the amphitheater, installed a new a hundred amp electrical service and overhead lights and outlets in the pavilion. Hardesty Park, we installed new fixtures and, and added electrical service. At Park East, we, we assisted in that Kaboom Playground Project. At the Ellett Community Center, we removed and replaced existing flooring with new vinyl tile. Uh, we conducted an inventory of all our AEDs, smoke detectors and fire extinguishers at our municipal buildings, the Stub Building and the City Center. We assisted in the festivals with electric barricades cleanup in the downtown last summer. And our goals this year is to continue the improvements of our security at the Municipal Service Center, continue and coordinate of the upgrade parking deck with new control equipment. Highway maintenance, uh, last year, we successfully bid, awarded and managed the resurfacing with an outside contractor, fifty-four additional miles resurfaced. We restored and repaired eight hundred and ninety-seven permanent restorations. Those are from water and sewer, typically water main breaks and sewer breaks. So they do a temporary patch and then the highway division will come in, they will remove the temporary and they will make a permanent restoration. We completed forty-three hundred and forty-four potholes requests. Our goals this year is to do another fifty-four miles, another bid, award and complete all the resurfacing. Uh, continue to collaborate and form partnerships with neighboring communities and government agencies, including U of A, DAP, Ohio and Erie Canal, Summit County, the Ohio Department of Transportation on goods and services. Uh, we completed five rounds of sweeping, Route Eight, Route two twenty-four and MLK, and we will, and we will complete five rounds of expressway mowing that we're still responsible for. We will continue to train our employees to, to get their CDL, whether they're, we start with our permanent employees and we start, then we work with our seasonals to get their CDL, which will help them to continue employment in the city or if not, they can, it will help them for future employment somewhere else. Motor equipment, asset works upgrade, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, they were really instrumental in helping us open the Copley Road facility to set up for snow and ice operations for repairs during those times. Uh, we made specific, made changes specifically to our snow and ice controllers in the future salt trucks, saving about forty-five hundred a year per truck, just by the, by the application of the salt. Our goals this year is to analyze our current vehicle specs and make necessary changes to improve the service life, continue with the snow and ice support, especially at the Copley Road facility, while looking to grow our capabilities of maintenance and repair at that facility. We're testing a new tire that's designed specifically for our sanitation trucks. These tires are designed to increase fuel mileage, increase wear and better resistance to punctures. These tires have the potential to save thousands in tire replacement costs in that sanitation department. Parks Maintenance, uh, last year, we rebuilt the infield at Firestone Stadium, uh, the girls softball field at Davenport Park, we added Stonewalk Pass to Hardesty, Hillcrest, Upson, Jewett Parks. We worked with the Parks Challenge to install new signs at those parks. We responded to twenty-six hundred and ninety-four service requests. And as we, if you remember, last summer, when we had a storm come through Ellett and we had one come through Firestone Park, we had eight hundred and eighty storm damage work orders. And that's not, on that storm damage, there were so many trees down, we basically shut down the mowing for two weeks, two different times last summer, and just went through the streets and just picked up downed trees or removed the downed trees that were across the road. And, uh, we successfully did that without an outside contractor's help. Our goals this year is to complete the conversion of the Patterson Park Community Center Ball Field to a soccer field because of the needs in that community. Uh, we're going to explore more possibilities of reducing our mowing and have more nature areas. And then we are continuing to work at Joy Park to leveling that park out and to increase the activities there. Sanitation, we lowered our recycling contamination from thirty-nine to twenty-eight percent last year with the help of Keep Akron Beautiful and a grant from the Ohio EPA. We collected fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five tires last year. We lowered our recycling contamination, our goal this year is to lower it even further rate and increase our participation in our recycling program. We'd like to partner with Akron Public Schools to have the opportunity to give some of the classroom demonstrations to the children to educate them on recycling, if we can reach out to the children early enough, it could be a lifelong recycler. Children also would like, would like to take the knowledge home and help educate their family, improve our overall awareness of the recycling program offered by the city. Our Street Cleaning Division, we completed all our rounds of sweeping, complete leaf removal. Mother Nature had something to do with that and, and we'll take it every year. If we get no snow before the first of the year, it was a very successful year. We've kind of looked the last couple of years, the leaves have come down a little bit later, but the staff has readjusted their schedule and we had a very successful year this year. Uh, they're going to, they want to improve the snow and ice, they did improve the snow and ice operations with route revisions with a new aggressive strategy, and our goals this year are there again to get all our sweeping rounds done by October fifteenth and then get one, get one round of leaf removal completed or the leaf removal program completed by the end of the year. So that, that is the Public Works Division, I was going to have those gentlemen, ladies stand up real quick. What we, we have Jim Hall is behind me, Anthony Dolly, Dan Dempsey, Kevin Miller and Scott Robinette. Next, I think you have Engineering. I'm going to go right to the accomplishments, we received nine WPCLF loan awards last year. Those were for various CSO projects. The WRF Biocept project was, project sponsored six WRSP projects, which we received an interest rate reduction down to point six-six percent. The Hazel Basin benefited from three million dollars of zero percent interest. We sponsored twelve WRSP grants totaling fourteen million. The savings over the city, the life of those bonds is projected to be about three point three million. We, uh, we successfully ran the small and large diameter lining project last year on various streets. We received various roadway funding that Engineering went after, the Stuber Avenue Bridge. We received a one point three million dollar grant, the Goodyear Boulevard Bridge, we received two million dollar grant, the North Main Street Bridge to Bridge Project, we've applied for and received six point nine million dollars worth of grant funding and nine hundred thousand of CMAC funding. The Canton, the Canton Road Market Intersection, which is going to be around about, we received seven hundred thousand dollars from OPWC. And the River City Heritage Trail, we received seven hundred thousand dollars of TA SA grant funding. And the Forest Street Project, we were, had that on, if you remember, back in eighteen and then we brought it back to nineteen and we received more funding, so we received nine hundred thousand for that project. We bid eighteen projects totaling a hundred and forty-five million dollars last year. As you know, we have a few orange barrels around, so. Uh, the highlights, the Hazel Basin is, is, it's part of the consent decree, it's a four and a half million gallon storage basin over on Hazel. Uh, right now, it looks like that contractor's about four to six months ahead of schedule. Uh, we successfully installed a splash pad at Joy Park, that was the first one we did. WRF's Biocept Project, complete design bidding and we began construction. That was, uh, that was through amendment, uh, through the EPA that our staff worked on very hard. That will take us from two twenty up to two hundred and eighty million gallons a day. And that was a cost saving by, by that project, instead of bioactive flow, we're doing Biocept. Headworks is another project that we are, we are in the process of installing down at the plant. And Engineering did the design and helped with the bidding on that. Evans Avenue Bridge is underway, it's going to be completed in twenty-one. Main Street Corridor Downtown, that will be completed this summer. Canal Park, we upgraded the lights at Canal Park last year to LED. Towich Avenue is a complete design and bid, that will begin here in about another month. As you know, Roaming Road, we started last year and that will be completed early this summer. They also managed the construction and we opened two new fire stations last year, fire stations two and four. Plans and permits, plan review process was over a thousand, permits process was about twelve hundred. Traffic engineering, we had fourteen hundred requests from three-one-one, city council administration and other departments that were addressed. We repaired twenty-three hundred signals last year. We received over fourteen thousand hoops markings, that was for other utilities that we successfully went out. It was nine hundred and thirty-one tickets that we, we processed last year. Street lighting, as you could see, two hundred and eight, sixty-eight work orders, fourteen hundred outages reported by Edison through three-one-one. We helped with the Great Streets Program. We helped with the Great Streets Program. That is all for traffic engineering. Now, engineering, Akron Waterways renewed. As I mentioned earlier, we had case team approval for amendment number two. We spent some time in court this summer, and the judge did grant, in December, he did grant our amendment, which is, which is huge cost savings to the program. We began a study of the north side separation, which is the four racks, that's another tunnel job. We are looking to do a separation conveyance project in lieu of a tunnel. At the end of nineteen, ninety-two percent of all consent decree projects were completed or under construction. Akron Waterways renewed, public outreach program in 2019 included more than a thousand attendees at the Blue Heron, a thousand participants in the AWR trolley tours, including over five-hundred students, three-hundred people receiving rain barrels, forty-five high school students participated in the all-student engineering program. Public outreach, our engineering staff participated in disadvantaged business outreach events and local hiring, inclusion, monitoring, and staff meetings. Number five bullet point, forty-five students were employed in the program in nineteen, generating more than eighty-thousand dollars of economic opportunity during the two-and-a-half months of the summer internships. Our goals this year is to reduce our consultant expenses and perform more work with our internal We did, we began, this year we will begin using our new paint truck, which arrived late in nineteen, which will help us provide a greater application flexibility and better marking and durability. The implementation of phase two of a plan, plan review software, and integrate with City Works. So we also will formalize and streamline design bid and construction process for the Akron Parks Challenge projects. I mentioned City Works quite a few times, and this probably, we're getting real close where all the departments will talk to each other, which is going to be huge for us. In the past, we started, and a lot of the departments weren't on City Works, 3-1-1 was starting, and Public Works was probably the first one, the building department started, they're on, they're going to be on it now. But our problem in the past was a 3-1-1 operator would get a call, and they would say, there's a hole or a depression in this address. Well, if it was a water sewer repair, that call taker wouldn't know right away. So we're streamlining that, and with them on the system now, when they bring in that address, they say, oh, that was a water main break, and it'll go right to Doug Zewellin, and it'll get handled, okay? If it's a pothole, it'll go right to Jim Hall. If it's a sewer break, it would go right to Vincent Pelli. So this is going to streamline our process, it's going to reduce the amount of times people have to investigate, where it's going to three different people. It's really going to help the end result for the resident or whoever's calling 3-1-1. So that's engineering. The next, I think, in your packet is, is the WRF, which is the sewer department. Our goals in nineteen was, you know, to complete the second of the five-year CMOM program, where we TV'd, cleaned, and submitted those results to the EPA. So we did have another employee in nineteen, receive as certified wastewater collection system operator through Ohio EPA. We inspected and cleaned approximately a hundred-and-fifty-two miles of sanitary and combination sewers, and only had four SSOs due to main blockage, which is a sanitary sewer overflow, which is really low. I mean, we're really seeing, after the ten years, the calls for service in the sewer whole system has really dropped, which there again has helped the resident greatly. Sewer maintenance, with our house line insurance program, not only has helped the residents, but it's generated over twenty-two-thousand dollars, which that money goes right to Akron Cares. So we get a very small percentage of every house line insurance person that signs up. Our goals this year is to effectively operate and maintain the Ohio Canal Interceptor Tunnel in efforts to minimize overflow into the Little Cogga River. Now, it's not public yet, but yesterday we did tie in Rack Eighteen, which is the largest portion of the tunnel, that's over at Glendale. So that's twenty-eight percent of the total volume that the tunnel will receive. So that was connected in yesterday, it's working as designed, we still are working through things, but sewer maintenance has been right there lockstep. They can view the flow at the plant, they can operate the valves at the plant. So what you're going to see now is the crew is going to start to put Glendale back, the restoration will begin, there's some, the bypass that was in because of the tunnel will now be eliminated, and the road will be connected back to Rand Avenue. So we're probably going to make an announcement next week sometime, but this is a big step to activate that tunnel, and it is operating as designed, so we're very happy with that. At the, at the plant, our goals were to continue to operate and maintain the treatment plant and collection system in the manner to be eligible for a gold award from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. We are developing an operator training program to cross-drain wastewater operators across all shifts and to process, in all process areas, to ensure unified operations. Our accomplishments last year, in spite of our significant construction and process interruption, water reclamation received two, only two exceedancies and discharge, and was able to apply for the Silver, to apply for the Silver Award at the NACWA. Through marketing, utilization, treatment capacity, we generated five-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars in revenue, carefully accepting non-hazardous residential septicage and sanitary landfill leach aid. In other words, outside contractors that are, that are collecting this leach aid from landfills, they bring it to us, and then we treat that for them, and then we charge them by the truckload, because there's no way to measure if they bring us fifty gallons or five-hundred. So if that truck holds so many gallons, we charge for that. So it's been a very successful program, this was all done with our own employees that were reaching out to these vendors and saying, we could take this product. We didn't advertise it, they went out and did it, and it's been a, it's been a big success for our, our, our staff down there. We did have one WRF employee became a certified wastewater treatment professional operator. And the operation and maintain the treatment plant and collection system in a manner to be eligible for a gold award is one of our goals this year. So that is the wastewater WRF, which is headed by Brian Gresser, which, Brian's right here. And we have Vince Ampelli, and I think that's all we have right there, the rest are down there working. And last but not least...
Mr. Fricker, is all this, everything that is being said, is that going to be provided for everybody in hard copy or emailed? Because I don't have it.
You didn't have that?
No.
Okay. I'm not refreshed, that's, that's been my problem.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I thought, I thought you had it.
It was a lot, too.
Water supply, okay. Our goals this year are to complete final contract negotiations and begin deployment of our new AMI smart meter systems to our Akron customers, and upgrade our customer billing system, including our customer portal. So that's the water meters that are in everyone's homes. It's, we're going to, one of our goals is to implement a comprehensive water tank maintenance program to paint, bring into compliance and maintain our water tanks for multiple years. We would like to expand our lead service renewal program using grants and principal forgiveness loans. We'd like to, we'd like to use new lining technology, we have a thirty-six-inch water main that goes up through the west side of Akron, all the way out to the west side, that we've had some problems with in the past, and instead of replacing this water line, which means open cut through the neighborhood, we'd like to line that, that water line. Some of our accomplishments last year in water distribution, we repaired three-hundred-and-thirteen main breaks, we painted nineteen-hundred-and-fifty-four fire hydrants, we flushed eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-nine hydrants, and we replaced a hundred-and-seventy-four lead services and numerous hydrants and valves. The implementation of City Works, as I mentioned earlier, is now in the water department. We replaced thirty-thousand feet of cast iron water main with new ductile iron pipe. We installed eight-thousand new water mains for new developments, which is over seven miles of water main last year that we installed in our system. Our watershed, we are continuing to pursue grant funding, continue to develop and update the forestry management program, continue to manage existing grant projects in the watershed, continue to evaluate and identify unique revenue opportunities for the watershed, continue to educate the public on variety, water-related topics, including but not limited to the watershed stewardship, water treatment and distribution, the price of water, the drinking water quality, and the improvement in source water protection. Jessica Glocheski, who is our manager in the watershed, was awarded the 2019 Ohio Lake Management Society Innovation in Lake Management for her, for her work at Lake Rockwell. Stand up a minute there, Jessica. Another thing that Jessica worked on and obtained was the Ohio EPA WRSP sponsorship for Burton Wetland Conservation Project. That project has the capability of bringing us six-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars to protect sensitive watershed lands for water quality purposes. We receive an award for the Lake Area Protection Fund, from the Lake Area Protection Fund, for fifty-thousand dollars. We planted over thirty-five-hundred seedlings and managed two-hundred acres of city property for invasive species control. Jessica and her team, they did fourteen tours and nineteen educational events of Akron Public Schools, civic groups, college students, industrial professionals, and other interested parties. Robert Holmes, Charles Lacy, and Jessica obtained their Ohio EPA Credible Data Three Collection Licensing. We continue to developing and implementing the stewardship with Akron Public Schools, Kent State University, Women in STEM Program at Bookdale High School, and connect the underserved young women and professional mentors in the STEM field through a book study program. Water supply, over ten years and one million hours, lost time injury-free at the water I want to repeat that, ten years, one million hours, injury-free at the water plant. Nobody better get hurt tomorrow.
Is that unusual?
That, that's unusual, yes. We met or exceeded all Ohio EPA water treatment regulations with no violations. We maintain our ninetieth percentile lead sampling, which means we are always under, when we sample, whether it's in a resident or a business, under the limit. That's because of our treatment process at the plant. Our goals this year is to continue to achieve regulatory compliance, improve security at our plant, and continue to adapt to new and more complex Ohio EPA regulations. So with that, I'd like them to stand, which is head by Jeff Kornowski. And then we have Matt Eby, Doug Zewellin, and Jessica. And Matt this year received his class four, correct? Which is the highest, one of the highest, that's the highest you can re, receive in Ohio is your class four to run a water plant. So Matt, Matt did earn that, and that's a great honor, too. So with that, I will take any questions?
Do we pay for that?
Uh, yes.
We do, good.
Congratulations, you take up fifty-three pages of a two-hundred-eleven-page document, so.
I could have just said, we keep the trains running, but...
All right, obviously, a whole bunch here, and we do appreciate everything you guys do. I mean, as I look at this, I look at page twelve-twenty-seven, talking about sewer dollars and everything that's happened, thank you so much for that. More goes on than we can ever possibly realize. So I will open it up to council for, and again, just going to have to, for the sake of time, ask that you, it's not so much a program meeting as it is a budget meeting, and would open up for any questions. Mr. Embardo, and then I'll come to Mr. Swirsky.
Mr. Lotte, you mentioned the Glendale piece and twenty-eight percent, what does that mean? Does that mean twenty, were online twenty-eight percent?
Well, when they, when they designed the tunnel, there's nine racks, okay? So each rack, when they, when they figured that the tunnel had to be twenty-seven-foot diameter tunnel, okay? So Rack Eighteen, if that tunnel would fill more than the typical year, that's going to contribute twenty-eight percent of that total volume of flow. So Rack Four, which is right, kind of close to the federal building, kind of right outside of First Energy, where Mill and the parking deck is, that rack is like three percent.
Okay.
But it still has overflows in the typical year, but that contribution is only three percent. That's what I meant.
Glendale was twenty-eight percent of that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, the total volume of the tunnel.
Thank you.
Mr. Swirsky?
Just, you rattled off...
Microphone.
Okay. Because you rattled off a number of projects where we're doing really good work with LED, installing LED lighting, mostly in large public places. Is there any plans for future, is there any dollar amounts being, using dollars, dollar amounts being planned for future LED lights in the street lighting program that we have?
We've, we've worked with First Energy, and they're developing a program. I think what's happened in the past, they were waiting to get consistency on a head. So I think they're working with General Electric, they've come to that. And we're right now, when we've met with them last, they, they change bulbs as they burn out. But as they lose a ballast, or they lose more, if it's not just a bulb, they are going to look at, start replacing that with the LED fixture. So take the whole head down and put an LED fixture. They're not at that point where if a bulb's burned out, they're going to put an LED fixture up there, okay? But they are going to work that way, yes. They own ninety percent of the streetlights, so we do not. So our streetlights that we own, if we would do a retrofit, they would definitely be LED. So when we did DART and ran a couple of years, LED. We own those streetlights. When the high, the Y bridge was done, LED. So if we own them, they're going to be LED.
Okay, do we have any LED, I mean, any streetlight, residential street lighting that we own, the...
Not residentially.
We don't own any that way?
No.
Okay, all right. So, but you're, you're...
We, we'd rather not own them. If we, if we, they would like us to take ownership, but if we take ownership of the streetlights and a car hits it, guess what? We got to go out there and replace it.
For liability?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lotte, you mentioned the service fees and how they fund, I believe, Akron Cares, did I understand you correctly?
That was the, when we, when we offered the service line insurance, which is totally volunteer by the residents, we get a small portion of that three dollar, I think it's three dollars and ninety-five cents a month they pay. I, I don't know if we get five percent of that, but that money that we knew going in, when we received those funds, a yearly check, we would go right to Akron Cares.
Okay. Mr. Fricker?
Yes.
Akron Cares program, usually we release that the weekend of Dr. King's holiday. We haven't heard anything in regards to that. Where do we stand as far as that being funded? When is it going to be released?
Yeah, I'm working on that. We're going to be coming back to council with a revised program. We're looking at expanding our reach. So I went out and looked at, you know, eight other municipalities that do similar programs. So you are going to be getting that information in March, we're hoping to launch April first. So as soon as we conclude budgets, we, I will be meeting with you guys to go over the revised program planning. And we are going to open it up to allow people to apply electronically, before they had to come into the office to apply, and do a one-on-one interview, kind of... come into the office to apply and do a one-on-one interview kind of with our CSR rep. So we're really looking at how can we expand this to reach more people? And then also, how can we allow people to tap these dollars in a, in an easier manner? And by making them come in and meet with someone during restricted times, that was making it, you know, prohibitive to some people being able to do Akron, to, to apply for the program. So we are looking at that and we are expanding the program and there will be more information within the next week or two.
Okay, because that, like the roofing program, if we could get an idea, I'm always kind of leery when we say we're going to look at something after we affirm the budget because we affirm the budget, so we have, we have the money set aside. Because I'm always wondering, where's, where's the money going to come from if we've already approved the budget for something like that? So if we can get an idea of what we're looking at-
Well, I could get you an accounting of the revenue that's in the account. And we do collect revenue. People can donate to that program through their bills. They also employ dress down days, funds go towards Akron Cares, some of these dollars. So we have revenue that's coming in for different streams for that program. So absolutely, we can get you an accounting of that and then we can, we can get that to you this week.
And then one last question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Lottel, I know we've had these questions before. A budget reflects the overall goals and objectives of a city. And we, we've had these conversations before. We, we got the, one piece of information about the procurement contracts that come out, 5%. Most of those fall under your department, I do believe. What metrics, what lens, what measurements are we using to put in place to make sure that we increase that 5%? So that whenever something comes through, there should be some guidelines. We share some information with council. It's just standard practice, whenever something comes through. Can, can we get some idea of what we're using?
So we actually had a meeting on this today. I'm, I'm working on that project as well. We are, that is going, the, the position that the mayor mentioned at the state of the city, that is going to be the first that's going to be owning that and developing the metrics and the KPIs to, to monitor. How can we segment contracts? What diverse firms do we have in our community that can fill and perform on these contracts? And they're going to be working with both engineering and purchasing, looking at what is the availability of firms in our community and how to, how can we continually analyze our success at that? We don't have anything developed as of yet. We are going to be releasing a report so that you guys can all see how we came up with those numbers. We had an economist go through and look at our past data, but this is something that is in development, so.
This is, this is my only concern. In this city with the schools and with the sewers, that's close to $2 billion, over and above our regular budget. And we're saying that possibly there's been 5% participation from the black community. We're putting things in place. This, this is another annual budget, yearly budget for the city that's going to go by that citizens that have been well documented, haven't had a chance to participate, aren't going to be able to participate again. One of the things we talked about, and this was, I think you had just got on, I don't even know if you were in that position yet, we were talking about with Mr. Moore when he was service director, is we know that we have these service line breaks. We don't know when they're going to come, but we know they're just part of doing business. Making sure that we have some small businesses that could possibly do that work.
Absolutely.
And so this is what I'd like to know. Who are our main contractors that, that feed off of this? Who makes up that 5% from the black community?
Absolutely, we can get you that.
Please, I, I'd like to have it before I approve this budget. And then what I'd like-
And yesterday, yesterday, part of the, any questions, what we said is any questions that went across there, we'll have answers back by like Monday.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then what we can do is we can ask them to work with the city. They should be able to find somebody and if they can't, then we, I would like to see us as a city say, well, then we're going to find somebody who can help us achieve our goals. Because, like I said, $2 billion is going through projects that, you know, only come around once in the several generations lifetime. And most of our citizens haven't been able to, to participate in that.
And we are, we are really looking at that and I know Chris can attest to this as well. We're looking at overhauling our ordinances. We're looking at hiring someone. We're looking at technology. These are all pieces and parts that are going to, right now, you can't even get our opportunities online in regards to, if you're a vendor, you can't electronically sign up to be notified of opportunities. We're working on all of that because we recognize that those are all impediments to being able to contract with the city. And so there will be a report forthcoming that's detailing all of our recommendations that we made to the mayor, which we will be instituting. And so I think, I mean, this is just appropriating our expenditures, but we fully intend to work with council and, and to work with the community at increasing our diversity spend. That is absolutely for, first and foremost, on the mayor's mind, you know, as we continue through this year.
Yeah, again, no, no, no criticism, but I'd just like us to show urgency on this like we did when we had that, the bad snowstorm last year. We jumped on it, we had a solution right away. If we've got to do it just as simple as when you come in and we look and see if you look like one, someone from the, the disproportionate community that's having a chance to, just to be just as blunt, if we got to do a skin test, if we got to do a gender test, whoever's been excluded, if it's got to be that, that crude and that simple, then that's what we have to do. But to let another year go by and people not to be able to participate is unacceptable.
And we, we agree and we are working very hard on that. I've spent an extreme amount of time working on this and looking at other municipalities and developing a plan for us to move forward and to expand our spend with those diverse firms. So we're definitely working on it. And like I said, we will be having a report. We met this morning on it and we're making some final revisions and you guys will get that as soon as we're ready to release it, so.
Well, thank you. And again, don't, I mean, you're the, you, you guys are the ones that we have to ask these questions for. So again, by Monday, what I'd like to see is who, who's, who, who, who were the major ones that have fed off of those programs, off of those projects?
We can get that.
And then who makes up that 5%?
Mm-hmm, I got that information, so I can get that to you.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the breakpoint at where we, when we put a job out for bid and we advertise in the Beacon?
$15,000.
$15,000?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so anything over $15,000 goes by competitive sealed bidding and we publish it in the Beacon Journal and the Akron, the Akron Legal News and the Akron Reporter. So the issue though is, is right now-
It's in the reporter as well?
Correct.
Didn't know that, okay.
Yes. So the issue right now though is we want to harness technology and allow all of our vendors to register online, pick their commodity codes and then be electronically notified of all opportunities to compete on quoting under $15,000 or competitive bidding, which is over $15,000. So we are looking at instituting that technology because that's what other cities do. So, you know, I'm a, you know, construction firm, I register, I'm, I'm, you know, notified of all construction opportunities. So I don't have to look in the newspaper or, you know, look online on our website and try and find the information. It will be shot to them via email.
All right, Ms. Imobian, and we're going to wrap up here real soon.
Sure. I, I would like for Ms. Jessica Glozeski to come-
Glocheski?
What is it?
Glocheski.
Glocheski, to come to the mic. Certainly, congratulations on your award. But talk to us a little bit about what you're doing to increase the number of folks to look like you in this area, because I see you working on this one, this STEM. Can you talk about the project briefly? I know we don't have much time, Mr. Chair, but I just wanted to touch on it.
Yeah, we were fortunate enough to partner with Kent State University and University of Akron. We received a small seed grant to start a, a book study with juniors and seniors at Bookdale High School, all young women. We start out kind of with a general assembly and look who has interest in STEM fields. And then we have like mentors from different professions within the STEM field come. And we do kind of, we do a book study, so a few girls per mentor to try, and the book study is all about women in STEM. You know, we're just trying to get some of these girls to realize that here's a variety of STEM opportunities that you may not know you had. Here's a whole bunch of people with different life experience. So, you know, if, if somebody were to drop out of high school, they don't necessarily disqualify themselves from a field, a STEM field position. So we tried to have a, a variety of women who can come and talk about those experiences to these girls and also kind of get them a little bit of networking almost so that, you know, they learn about these professions and meet some people in there.
Do you get many to come out to tour the, the lake area where you are?
Yeah, we, it's, it's a different program that we have those students come out, but we do work with middle and high school, Akron Public Schools, different classes to come out and do tours of the water treatment plant, look at sustainability things and also some, how water gets to you and why it costs so much sometimes. So we try to educate the public and educate the youth on, you know, what they're going to pay for.
Well, thank you very much because we really, I don't think people realize all the opportunities are in the, the water area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Smell?
Thank you all very much. First, I just want to say that, you know, given all of the things that you read, Mr. Lottel, you guys are all working in a department which has very small margin for error and yet the level of excellence is really significant. I just want to thank you all for that. I just had a couple of specific questions. On page 1215 for highway maintenance, the number for current expenditures for 2019 budgeted versus actual expenditure versus budgeted for 2020 is pretty, there are pretty significant differences.
Right, so that has to do with, the, the primary reason for that is we are buying less salt in the highway fund because of the change in the way we're maintaining our streets in 2020 where we gave the maintenance of the interstates back to ODOT. So we're buying more salt through our assessed fund, which is the street cleaning budget, and we're buying less here because we don't need it anymore. It's going to be used more on the residential streets than on the highways.
Okay. And then page 1225 sanitation, there's some pretty big numbers here with the current expenditures in utility expenses and rentals and leases. Could you guys just explain what, what each of those amounts really are for? I imagine a lot of it is cost-
So the rentals and leases are for packer trucks that we buy, that we lease actually. So those are literally trucks that pick up garbage and recycling. Actually, on the side, it's just garbage. The utility expenses are the tipping fees that we pay to dump the trash at the landfill.
Okay. And then just one last question on page 1231, the WPCS composting operation, is, is the $14 million just our contract with the facility or that?
So it's a combination of the contract and then the, we pay, we're still paying debt service for the construction of the, I refer to Brian, what is that facility called?
The Aerobic Digestor System.
There we go, the Aerobic Digestor System.
Yeah, yeah. And as we construct other parts of the water reclamation facility, will we still maintain the same capacity going into the renewable energy facility?
Yes, yes. Because they're, they're processing our sludge.
Okay.
So if they didn't process our sludge, the sludge would go to a landfill.
Okay.
So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Going to call the meeting to a close and tomorrow, and Mr. Lottel, you'll be around for a few minutes, I'm sure, if there's, thanks to everyone in service, thank you. You know, everything, 90% of what you do, nobody notices, we just, but if it doesn't work, we notice. So thank you for everything that you do. Tomorrow at 3 o'clock, we're going to meet, I believe, is it Law is going to be first folks that are with us. Thanks, everybody. Thank you to each and every council member that showed up. You showed great discipline this afternoon. So thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, if I, I just, I would like for something to be on record. I would like something to be on record, just speaking to us, the council, not to them. I just want to speak to one thing so it could be on record. Yes, to us, oh, council, so it could be on record for us. No, 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 just, they could sit, they, they could hear me. I just want to make a comment.
Just bring it back Monday.
To us.
We're not hearing the morning.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, I'm here. I'll make it a-